Good afternoon. My name is John Sanders, the project manager for the sixty one twenty-five interchange project, and I want to welcome you today to our virtual public hearing. Thank you for taking the time today to come out and meet with us and learn more about this project. We appreciate your interest, and we know transportation is important to you and the residents in this area. I do want to inform you that as required, this meeting is being recorded, and by joining this meeting, you are giving consent to be recorded. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to the MoDOT team members who are online with me today assisting with this public hearing, and I will let each of them introduce themselves. First off, Andy.
Good afternoon. I am Andy Ellsworth, and I am the right-of-way manager in the Southwest District, and I handle the right-of-way acquisition for the project.
Thanks, Andy. Beth?
My name's Beth Schaller. I'm the area engineer for the Southwest District.
Thank you, Beth. Eric?
I'm Eric Turner. I'm a senior traffic studies specialist for the Southwest District.
All right, thank you, Eric. Jacob?
Hi, I'm Jacob Law. I'm a highway designer from MoDOT at the Southwest District.
Kevin?
I'm Kevin Manier. I'm a senior highway designer with Southwest District. I'm the lead designer on this project.
Mike?
Mike Bach. I'm the traffic operations engineer for the Southwest District.
Thanks, Mike. Scott?
I'm Scott McKee. I'm a project designer. I supervise the other designers on the project.
And last but not least, Tyler?
I'm Tyler Collison. I am on the right-of-way department here. I will be dealing with right-of-way acquisition for this project.
All right, thank you. We go back to share my screen here, and we'll continue on with our presentation. So today in our meeting, we are we are, we're going to cover a handful of things, and just wanted to go and let you know what we're looking at, talking about in our meeting today. And the first thing we will look at is the project purpose and need, kind of, you know, why are we doing this project? Also, we're going to look at, you know, how we got here, how we've arrived at the the concept that we're looking at today, that we've got designed today and presenting to you today. We're going to look at the project particulars, kind of a little bit about that project, what all is involved with this concept here, the schedule, from this point forward, kind of what we're looking at for finishing up the design and construction. I'll talk about for a moment about the environmental impacts that we'll have. We'll also look at the construction staging with the project, what it's going to take to get this thing built. And then we'll discuss a little bit about the right-of-way acquisition process, and I'll wrap up with some materials that are available on our website. And after that point in time, we will get into our question and answer session. So continuing on, our project purpose and need. The US sixty and Route one twenty-five intersection has one of the highest crash severity ratings in MoDOT's Southwest District. And when you compare that to other similar locations, the majority of the crashes at this intersection can be attributed to the backups and delays that are caused by the traffic signal. And so as volumes, you know, as it continued to grow and continue to increase on sixty and Route one twenty-five, those backups and those crashes at the traffic signal have also increased. The purpose and need of this project is to provide for the safe and efficient movement of travelers through the area on both US sixty and Route one twenty-five. An interchange is the safest full-access option for this particular intersection, and it does allow for the development of the existing vacant land at or near the intersection. It will accommodate current and future traffic volumes. It does minimize the delay of travelers through the intersection. This project is being processed in accordance with federal rules and regulations. Plans will be subject to review by the Federal Highway Department. Federal funds are being used for right-of-way acquisition and construction, and the percentage of federal funds used will be in accordance with current regulations. So how did we get here? This this concept of putting the interchange here has been talked about and looked at and considered for for many years at a high level. The project was actually finally added to our Construction State Transportation Improvement Program, which is called the STIP in two thousand and eighteen. The project was also added to the Transportation Improvement Program, which is also, which is called the TIP for the Ozark Transportation Organization, which is a local urban planning organization in our in our area, and that was added to the TIP in two thousand and eighteen as well. At that time, we began doing some more in-depth design to determine a better cost estimate for the project. The original concept one was to leave the intersection at the same location as the existing one and take sixty highway over the top of Route one twenty-five. This original concept was taken to a public meeting back in October of two thousand and eighteen to get feedback on that design. As we continued to work through that design process, the cost was very, very expensive, was much more expensive than other similar similar projects and more expensive than we had funded, funding for. The project did have a value engineering study performed on it to find ways for us to improve upon the design, to reduce the cost and to add value to the project. Out of that study, we began developing a new concept, which we considered as concept number two, and that was to move the interchange to the east about a third of a mile. When this concept was developed a little further, it was taken to a public meeting in August of two thousand and nineteen to get feedback comparing that concept two to the original concept one. The feedback we received at the time, people did have a preference for the original concept over concept two, moving the interchange to the east, but we still had the issue that the concept was too expensive, and it was greater than we could afford to build. So we went back to the drawing board, and we came up with a third concept similar to the first. But concept three kept the interchange at the same location as the existing intersection. But this concept took Route one twenty-five over the top of US sixty. We did hold a virtual online public meeting for that concept to show that concept to the public and compare that concept to concept two. But again, that meeting had to be a virtual meeting due to the pandemic that was going on back then and is still going on today. And based on that feedback that we received, people had a preference of the second concept over the over the third concept of moving the interchange to a third mile to the east. But after that meeting, the city of Rogersville and Green County Highway Department approached MoDOT with interest in partnering financially to deliver this project. And the city's preference was for the original concept one above all the others that had been presented. The city did ask us to make some modifications to help reduce the cost on that on that concept. And since that point in time, we had been working on designing that original concept one and implementing those modifications. This is our first, our fourth public hearing, our first public meeting, but it is a hearing on this project to show everyone the concept that we are moving forward with, to help answer questions people might have about this concept, and to take comments that might help us improve upon this current design. I do want to iterate to you again the project purpose and need there, and that is to provide for the safe and efficient movement of travelers throughout the area on both US sixty and Route one twenty-five. And the interchange, it is the safest full-access option for this particular intersection. At this time, I'm going to move over to looking at the project concept here itself. This is the revised concept one, and I'm going to have Scott talk a little bit about what this concept involves.
Revised concept one involves moving the US sixty eastbound and westbound lanes into the existing median and raising the lanes up and over the top of Route one twenty-five. There will be on-off ramps for both eastbound and westbound traffic. Some of the modifications included are moving some of the ramps out a little further from US sixty so we could reduce the retaining wall height on those sides of US sixty. We are going to reduce the elevation of Route one twenty-five by about six feet where it crosses the existing westbound lanes and about four feet where it crosses the existing eastbound lanes. This will further help us reduce the retaining walls needed. As part of this concept, we are constructing, we will construct a northwest outer road between Route one twenty-five and Farm Road two twenty-nine. The median crossover at Farm Road two twenty-nine will be closed, and the existing US sixty west of that intersection will serve as the northwest outer road leading to the Silver Bell Mobile Home and RV Park and the Three Stone Homes businesses. We'll stub out an outer road that will become the northeast outer road. This will allow us to move the entrance from US sixty, entrances from US sixty on to this outer road. This will be the case for the Come and Go Willow Green Gardens and the next resident to the east. Moving their entrances is necessary due to the new ramp that will be constructed. The new ramp will allow people to safely get on off of US sixty and onto Route one twenty-five, but we cannot safely have their entrances off of the ramp. The city would like to extend the northeast outer road to the east and tie it into Farm Road two forty-three, but there's currently no funding for this extension at this time. The plan is to move both projects, the interchange and the northeast outer road extension together toward a letting. We're designing and getting environment, environmental clearances for both of the projects. If funding is available for acquiring right-of-way, we will do that as well for the northeast outer road. If funding becomes available soon enough, we could construct the northeast outer road extension at the same time as we construct the interchange. Again, at this time, there is no funding for the extension of the northeast outer road. Northeast and northwest outer roads will intersect Route one twenty-five and be controlled by a stop sign for both the northeast and northwest outer roads. Route one twenty-five traffic will not stop. We will install two roundabouts, one on each side of US sixty at the intersection of Route one twenty-five and the on-off ramps. Roundabouts have been sized to accommodate tractor-trailer and other vehicles pulling trailers through the intersections. The roundabout will provide for safe and efficient movement of traffic in the intersection. Onto the project schedule. Project schedule from this timeframe forward consists of the following. We're going to obtain commission approval for our design at the January two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Complete the plans that detail the amount of right-of-way needed to construct the project in January of two thousand and twenty-two. Begin and complete the right-of-way acquisition process in two thousand and twenty-two. Relocate the utilities in twenty-two, twenty-two and finish up in two thousand and twenty-three. We're going to begin construction in early two thousand and twenty-three and finish construction in the second half of two thousand and twenty-four, with the project open in the fall of two thousand and twenty-four.
Thanks, Scott. Now I'm going to talk a little bit for a moment about the environmental impacts on the project. You know, MoDOT must comply with environmental laws and regulations when they plan, design, construct, and maintain our transportation projects. The National Environmental Protection Act, or NEPA, as we many times refer to it as, is the umbrella for compliance with those laws and regulations. After conducting our initial NEPA study, MoDOT determined and Federal Highway concurred, this project is classified as a CE two, which is a categorical categorical exclusion two. This designation means that the project will not individually or cumulatively involve significant social, economic, or environmental impacts. After additional design work was completed during the preliminary plan stage, additional right-of-way needs were identified, and the project is currently being reevaluated by Federal Highway, though no significant impacts are anticipated. At this time, I'm going to ask Kevin Manier to talk a little bit about the construction staging and walk you through how we will anticipate constructing this project. Kevin?
This modified concept is a bit more difficult to construct than the the original concept due to lowering the existing profile of Route one twenty-five through the intersection with US sixty. It becomes difficult to maintain a place for traffic while the material is being excavated out of the existing intersection. With that said, we are going to construct this project in five different stages, after which the project will be complete and everything open and operating as planned. Once we have a contractor on board, they might propose an equal or better way to construct this project, but at the at this time, point in time, these five stages is how we envision this project being constructed. To help you better understand what will take place in each construction stage and where traffic will be driving and what movements may be restricted, we have developed a set of staging displays to illustrate this progression. We plan to keep two lanes in each direction on US sixty open throughout the busiest times of the day. You may see some lane closures during those off-peak hours to aid us in getting this project built. Stage one, construction. A new northeast and northwest outer road will be constructed as shown. The northwest outer road will connect Farm Road two twenty-nine to Route one twenty-five. The northeast outer road will only be built to the location shown on the the display at this time. New entrances will be built to the northeast outer road for Come and Go Willow Green Gardens and Tree Farm and to the next property to the east of Willow Green Gardens. Once these new entrances are built to the northeast outer road, the existing entrances to the existing westbound lanes of US sixty will then be removed. The existing eastbound lanes of US sixty will be widened to the south as shown. This widening will be used in later stages of construction for the eastbound on and off ramps. Once the widening has been built, the eastbound traffic will be shifted to this new pavement. A temporary crossover will be built to the east of the existing Route one twenty-five sixty intersection at the location shown. This will be used to shift the westbound traffic from the existing westbound lanes over to the existing eastbound lanes. This will will be removed in later construction stages. A permanent crossover will be built to the west of the existing intersection in the location shown. This will take the westbound traffic back to the existing westbound lanes. This crossover will remain in place and used as we construct the eastbound and westbound lanes of US sixty in later stages. Temporary traffic signals will be installed at the intersection. The intersection will remain open. Traffic will be able to make all movements through the intersection. Farm Road two twenty-nine will be widened from the north, from the new northwest outer road to the existing westbound lanes of US sixty. The intersection of Farm Road two twenty-nine and the existing westbound lanes of US sixty will be improved, as shown with a larger radius, to accommodate the traffic to Silver Bell Mobile Home Park and to the Three Stone Home Business. The existing crossover at Farm Road two twenty-nine between the existing eastbound and westbound lanes of US sixty will be removed. A new entrance will be constructed to the Three Stone Homes business. A portion of the pavement for the existing westbound lanes of US sixty will be removed between the permanent crossover and the new entrance to Three Stone Homes. For traffic to access US sixty from this area, from Three Stone Homes east or at one twenty-five will only be allowed by this short section of the existing lanes of US sixty to Farm Road two twenty-nine, to the then to the new northwest outer road, and then to Route one twenty-five, and then back to US sixty. Stage two, construction. This stage will will construct the new westbound on and off ramps for the new interchange as shown. Once these are constructed, the westbound traffic will be shifted to this new pavement to allow for stage three construction of the eastbound and westbound lanes of US sixty in the median. The eastbound traffic will remain in the location from the stage one construction. Temporary traffic signals will be installed at the location where the westbound lanes intersect Route one twenty-five and at where and where the eastbound lanes intersect Route one twenty-five. Traffic will still be able to make all movements through the intersection. The intersection will still remain open. Stage three, construction. There are six existing crossovers along this stretch of US sixty from the interchange at Route NN and J to the partial interchange at Farm Road two forty-seven. These crossovers will be closed temporarily till the interchange is completed and open to traffic. These need to be closed due to the safe, due to safety concerns with the amount of east-west traffic along US sixty. No left turns will be allowed from eastbound or westbound US sixty on to one twenty-five, and no turns, left turns will be allowed from one twenty-five to eastbound or westbound US sixty until the interchange has been completed. Eastbound US sixty traffic can still turn south onto Route one twenty-five, and westbound US sixty traffic will still be able to turn north onto one twenty-five. Route one twenty-five traffic will still be able to travel through north and south. Construction will begin of the new eastbound and westbound lanes of US sixty in the median as shown. The bridge will be started at this stage. The end bends for the bridge, along with the MSE walls or retaining walls, between the new eastbound and westbound lanes of US sixty and the on-off ramps and under the new bridge will be constructed. MSE walls are needed due to the amount we are raising the profile of US sixty over the new lower profile of Route one twenty-five and the close proximity of the on and off ramps. The intersection will still remain, will will remain open, but there will be no left turns allowed. Stage four, construction. The intersection in the median of US sixty will be closed at this stage to finish constructing the new bridge and excavating the material out of the intersection to lower the interchange area four to six feet. Route one twenty-five traffic will only be able to turn right onto US sixty. No left turns and no through traffic will be allowed on Route one twenty-five. US sixty traffic will be able to go through the intersection or turn right onto one twenty-five. Stage five, construction. At this stage, the intersection of Route one twenty-five with US sixty will be closed completely. Route one until the until final construction. Route one twenty-five traffic will utilize other options to access US sixty. Eastbound and westbound US sixty traffic will not have access to Route one twenty-five until this stage has been finished. This stage will construct the new Route twenty-five alignment at the lower profile. Roundabouts will be constructed at the ramp terminals as shown. These roundabouts are large enough to allow trucks to maneuver the roundabouts. The circle, the center circle of the roundabout will be built as a low-profile island with a two-inch mountable curb. This low-profile island will allow the oversized overweight loads to be able to maneuver the roundabouts and travel north onto Route one twenty-five. A portion of all four ramps will also be rebuilt to connect to the lower profile of the roundabouts. A new right-in, right-out entrance to Come and Go will also be built. Ditch improvements will be made along Route one twenty-five south of US sixty for approximately twelve hundred feet to improve the drainage. Entrances along this stretch will also be improved. Once stage five is being finished, the interchange can be open for traffic.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Appreciate you going through that staging plan with us there, and I know that's a lot to take in, a lot to understand, but hopefully those diagrams and stuff, the displays there help a lot with that. So appreciate you doing that for us, Kevin. Next, we're going to talk for a moment about the right-of-way acquisition process. This project does require some permanent, some permanent easements, some temporary construction easements, and some right-of-way to be obtained in order to build this project. At this time, Andy is going to talk to us a little bit about the right-of-way acquisition process. So, Andy?
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Andy Ellsworth, and I am the right-of-way manager in the Southwest District for the Missouri Department of Transportation, and and our office will be handling that land acquisition and easements for the project. Like to give you kind of a short little overview of of the process. Once the design is complete and finalized, our department will start the acquisition process. And that first step is usually the appraisal process. So an appraiser will come out, get in contact with the landowner, set up a meeting. The landowner is encouraged to be at that meeting as well as they come out and do their inspection of the property. The appraiser will kind of go over in more detail the effects of the property to the or the project to the property. And as you can see on the 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 picture on the presentation, those areas that are kind of outlined in red, those will be the areas of new land acquisition that will be necessary for the project. And then once the appraisal is completed, the they will derive an offer that will be presented to the landowner. And so another staff member from the Missouri Department of Transportation will be getting with the landowner at that point to present the offer for whether it's new land easement rights that we will need for the project. They will also hand out some additional information as far as the documents for conveyance, escrow agreement, the deed, some letters. We have a notice of intended acquisition letter, a plan sheet. They'll go over the plans again with the property owner, answer any questions they might have, any concerns. And so we'll present the offer. And once the offer is presented, the staff and the property owner will work together and try to come to an agreement so that we can acquire the land that we need to build the project. And once all the land is purchased, we'll move this project on to the next phase, which would be construction. And got another slide there, John. There's also some information that is out there in Rogersville. For those that might be being affected by the acquisition process, we have this Pathways for Progress brochure out there. And this brochure kind of gives a more detailed overview of the process as far as the negotiating or the appraisal, the negotiation phase, and if we do have to move on to the next phase as far as through the court process. So thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Andy. Appreciate you going over that with them. And yeah, this Pathways for Progress, there's a little pamphlet. There's also a link on our MoDOT website for this project where you can actually get a get a, you know, electronic copy of that that brochure there. So if anybody who's interested in there, you can just go to our our website, mo dot dot org backslash SW and navigate to our our project website for this project and and download that that brochure. All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for for your attention while listening to our presentation on the sixty-one twenty-five interchange project. I also want to let you know about some other information that you're going to find out there on our webpage. There is, as you see here on the screen, there is a project timeline in the schedule that we've discussed today. That's that's out there on their webpage. There are a couple of different videos that we have out there that help explain some of the same information that we've covered today in our meetings. So that's that's out there for your for your opportunity to to review or to listen to and and gain some more insight to to the project here. There is a project fact sheet that's going to be out there as well that you'll be able to find. There are some frequently asked questions, and even those displays that we've shown in this presentation, those displays are going to be out there for preliminary plan design, that display there. There is the actual northeast outer road, that the one that we talked about, the extension over to Farm Road two forty-three, that is out there. If funding becomes available to to be able to construct that. And then all the five stages that we that we reviewed with you here, those five stages are out there on our webpage as well. And right below all those staging diagrams or exhibits there, you'll see a button that says sign up for project updates. And so I would encourage you, if you're interested and would like to, to go ahead and you can click on that button, and you can fill out a little bit of information about yourself and email address. And that way, whenever new or additional information comes out about this project, you'll get you'll get notified through an email. And that way, whenever new or additional information comes out about this project, you'll get, you'll get notified through an email. So if you're interested, yeah, please, please take the opportunity to, to sign up for that. So we are getting ready now to jump into our question and answer phase or portion of this, this hearing. And so how do I ask questions? How do I, how do you participate in this part of the, the meeting here? There are a few different ways in which you can do that. First, there is a chat function on this WebEx platform that we're using to, to deliver this online public hearing. There is a chat function over there that you can actually utilize. Type in your chat in that WebEx platform and we will be able to see that. Me and all the panelists here will be able to see that and we can try to address those questions as they come. There's also the availability of a MoDOT phone number. You see that there, four one seven, seven six six, four eight, one four. You can call that number and leave a voicemail on that number or you can text a question or a comment to that number. And the person who's got that, that phone number will, will get that information to me. And so we can try to address those, those questions there. And the last, last method in which you can provide a comment to us right now or a question to us right now is you can send an email to SWCR at mo dot dot org. And again, we have folks that are there watching that email right now so they can pass that, that, that question, that comment along to us and, and our panel here and we can try to answer that question for you. There is also another option, if you go to our MoDOT webpage, as I talked said before, mo dot dot org backslash SW, you'll see a place where you can go to major projects and you can click on this 6125 interchange project. And that will, will, there at the, at the bottom of that page, there is a, there is a form, an online comment form in which you can fill out and hit the submit button on that. And that will automatically go to our communications folks. And that can then later also be brought, or sent to me and I will be able to get your, try to get your question to answered there as well. So I want to thank you all for, for your time. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and pause here and let the questions start coming in and we will try to address those one at a time. Okay, the first question that I have, it says, what if any improvements will be made to Farm Road 223 and Highway 60 crossover just west of this project? It is a pretty dicey approach with the high-volume traffic at highway speeds with no turn lane going either direction. So I can tell you right now, our project does not, does not have any, any of the median crossovers that we are, that we are touching or doing anything with, except for that one that is right there that we talked about before at Farm Road 229, I believe it is. And that one there has to get removed because it's right there at the, at the location where the existing lanes become the outer road. And it just became a continuation of that, a Farmer 229 there. And so that, that crossover there actually will get removed. But there are none of the other crossovers that are outside of our project limits will be, will be touched with this project. Other than they will be closed, you know, as we talked about before, they will be closed in stage three, four, and five of the project. Then after that point in time, they would be opened back up. I have another question here. It says, do you foresee the speed limit changing from 60 to 65 mile per hour after the construction is complete? And I will tell you, I don't have an answer for that. I don't, don't, don't know. I don't. Eric, would you or Mike want to comment on that one for us?
Sure, I can talk about that a little bit. Initially, we won't change it right away. We'll evaluate it afterwards, but it'll most likely remain 60 miles an hour for the foreseeable future. So especially so long as the entire section isn't freeway status. It'll, it'll remain 60 mile an hour as long as there's expressway in the area for sure. So.
Thanks, Eric. Another, next question I've got is, when will we send the project out for bid? Currently, our, our schedule right now is looking at November of 2022 that we would have the bids due back from the contractor. So we typically have about a five-week advertisement period there. So in around the beginning of October-ish timeframe is when we would see the project go out advertised for bid and those bids will be due around the middle of November. That is what our current schedule is for now. And I guess if there's potentially for, for, for some delays in the project at some point, that, that could change. But that is our current schedule at this point in time. Uh, next question that I have got is it appears the Silver Bell Park and another business only have one means in or out. Is that correct? And the answer to that question would be yes, after, after our project is constructed, that piece of the existing westbound lanes in front of their business will wind up being an outer road that will dead-end. And we will tie the new, new alignment of, of 60 that goes in the median there. We will tie that back into the existing lanes. And so yes, that, that, that outer road will have to dead-end there at the Silver Bell Mobile Home in Three Stone. Excuse me. Next question that I've got come in from here, or from the meeting says, why not use a roundabout of 125 in the outer roads on the north side of 60? So I believe that's where they're talking about the northwest outer road and the northeast outer road that would tie into 125. And we said that that, at this current design, that intersection will be a stop sign intersection for the northeast and northwest outer road. At this point in time, again, now that we would anticipate, you know, with the volumes of traffic that would be on those outer roads, that a, a stop sign intersection would, would be sufficient to, to handle and address the traffics that's coming there. If sometime in the future, if the volumes would continue to increase on those outer roads, such that maybe, you know, it might be necessary or might be advantageous in the future to change that intersection to a roundabout. But at this point in time, we are, we are looking at just having that stop sign intersection there. And again, Eric or Mike, would you guys want to comment anymore on that?
Yeah, in the future, it could be evaluated for another type of intersection control such as a roundabout. Right now, the cost-effective part is a two-way stop with 125 knot. But that is something that we can always come back and look at in the future at that intersection.
Okay, in case you couldn't hear Mike, Mike, I was having a hard time hearing you. You were, you were sounding pretty quiet there, but, but yeah, basically Mike said, yeah, we would be able to evaluate that at a future, a future point in time. You know, as the volumes did continue to increase there, we would, we could reevaluate and see what, what the intersection would, would best serve that, that location. But at this point in time, we, we think the, this stop sign intersection would work just fine. Correct, Mike? I think that's what he was saying there. The next question that I have is, are two eastbound and two westbound lanes maintained throughout all phases of construction? And the answer to that question, Kevin, you want to answer that question quick for him?
Yeah, the plan is to keep during the busiest times of the, of the day or two lanes of traffic in each direction. After peak times, there could be lane closures to, depending on what stages of construction is done, could be length, some lane closures, but they should, they should happen after the peak, peak times of traffic.
All right. Thank, thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that. The next question I got is, will access to Farm Road 223 be affected in any way by this project? And also during phase five, you said 125 will be cut off. Will there be detours for 125 traffic? Kevin or Scott, you might help me out here with game with Farmer 223, which one that one is? And help me answer that question. Will access to that farm would be, be affected?
Farm Road 223 is the first, it's the second crossover to the west of 125. It'll still be open at that point. Up through fa, up to state, well, stage three, it'll be closed as stated in the construction staging. We're not actually, there's not actually any work going to be going on. The project doesn't extend to that point.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Yeah. So basically like you've placed it for me there. Thank you that it's the second intersection west of this project. And so, yeah, that one's outside of our project limits. We, as far as our improvements that we're going to make. So we won't, we won't do any permanent changes to that, to that crossover. But it will get closed down in stages three, four, and five, and then it will be opened back up after the project is completed. And the second part of your question, also during phase five, you said 125 will be cut off. Will there be detours for 125 traffic? The detours, yeah, we're, we're talking about that. We're still working through that part of our, of our design. Still a lot of design work that has to be done on the project there. But I would anticipate there'll be some kind of a, you know, there'll be some kind of a, you know, detours there, whether that's either some state highways or possibly, you know, even if we, when, many times when we sign a state highway detour route that people will wind up taking a shorter, shorter route that winds up utilizing like a county road system or something like that. So, so we would anticipate that there will be some kind of a detour around one, for 125 to get, you know, from the north side to the south side or vice versa. But that's, all the full details of that just haven't been completely ironed out. But, but yes, the 125, the big thing is no, is that 125 would be closed off from Route 60. Would be basically a dead end for, for a period of time there. Next question that I got is, what is the potential timeline or probability of funding for the extension of the northeast outer road? I don't, and I'm not sure exactly what, what, what they mean by potential timeline. But I, I think, I think what trying to ask here is, you know, how long do you have to get, get funding in place? Maybe something like that is, is kind of what the question is trying to ask here. And I guess my, my answer is, is we're, we are looking at, we're working through the design right now. We're, we're doing some of the design work. We're doing the environmental work on it as well to get clearances there from federal highway. When that is, when that's completed there, then we can move into a right-of-way acquisition phase. There is a, there is a, there would be, I guess, an issue that if, if there is no funding available for the project at that time, that, and if the right-of-way did cost money to acquire, that we would not be able to acquire that at that time. But if there was a, if there was right-of-way that was, had the potential and, and property owners are, are wanting to, 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 to donate that land, I guess, to the, to the cause for that project there, then that's something that we could accept at that time. And, and then we would continue on with our final design work for the project there. And, and looking at that May of 2022 for a letting date for the, the interchange project. And so we would need to have the, the funding probably in place sometime a little bit before that, before that November. I mean, it would have to be something that would be in place a few months ahead of that, ahead of that time so that it could be actually be advertised at the same time the interchange was. Uh, next question I got is, will Wildcat Rental retain their current driveway access to Route 125? And the answer to that question, I believe, is there will be a, a change. And Kevin, help me out here. Actually, would you, would you answer that question? I believe there's going to be a change, a little bit of change in their driveway. They'll, they'll, I think, end up losing the driveway that's, or actually, that's not their driveway, I believe, that they're losing. But there's going to be the driveway closest to, to 60 highway that will have to go away. And, and we'll move that down to the, to the next driveway to the south, which I think is the Wildcat Rental driveway. Kevin, can you go ahead and talk about that one for a moment?
Yeah, it's due to the, with the roundabout going in and the, the islands that will go in, the existing driveways would end up being a right-in, right-out. They're too close to the roundabout. So the, the, we're going to shift it to the south slightly. So yeah, it, they will still have access, but the entrance will be shifted to the south.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate you answering that for us. The next question I have is, will the owners of the properties be contacted for the northeast outer road construction? When prior, uh, with, or when, when prior to when the construction will start or when there will be funding? And I guess my property is located at a certain location. So I'm assuming this might be maybe one of the questions coming in from one of the property owners in that, in that area. And so, yes, our, the intention would be, I guess, to, to, well, Andy, I'm going to, actually, I'll let you talk a little bit about that one, if you don't mind, how that, how that process works. If we have no funding for the northeast outer road so that we couldn't actually buy any right-of-way, you know, how would the, the notification process work for that northeast outer road?
Well, I guess if there's no funding for the construction of it and the roads weren't going to be built, I don't necessarily know if we would be contacting them since we wouldn't necessarily be acquiring anything.
I think, you know, I, again, some of the, some of the feedback we've heard that, you know, possibly the, there's a, there's interest in some property owners being, being interested in donating right-of-way. So if they are interested in donating right-of-way, I guess that's something that could be, could be received by us at, at that, at that stage, I guess, once we get right-of-way plans approved.
That is correct. We have to have an acquisition date approved before we can acquire any land for this project, whether it be by donation or by the acquisition phase on the purchasing of it. So we, we really can't have any discussions on a lot of that stuff until we have an acquisition date.
Thanks, Andy. And yeah, again, that acquisition date, what it requires us is to get some right-of-way plans that are approved as well as getting our environmental clearances taken care of. Another question that I've got is, what is the anticipated time period per stage? And that question, we're, we're not going to be able to answer that question today. Again, this is the preliminary plan stage of the project and there's, there's still a lot of design work that has to be done to, to finish up this project here. And, and so as we kind of get a lot of that design work done there towards the tail end of a job, we really start getting a good look at how long it's going to take us to do each of these various stages there. And, and so it's something that we just, I, I couldn't, couldn't give an answer to right now. Just don't know necessarily how long to anticipate each of those stages will, will take. I think overall, just looking at the project overall of what we anticipate to have constructed there, that's why we, we felt like we would see something here in the second half of 2024 that we would be able to wrap up the entire project. But how long each individual stage will take, I, I couldn't answer that question today. Uh, the next question I got is, how will this affect the crossover at Farm Road 241? Uh, Kevin, Scott, would one of you want to answer that question?
Uh, the crossover, it's the crossover at Farm Road 221. It's the first one to the east of the intersection. And it will be closed temporarily in stages three, four, and five until the interchange is complete. And then we'll, with, along with the others, we'll open them back up.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. Yeah. And I guess, you know, thinking about it, if, if for some reason that farm road, or excuse me, if that northeast outer road was extended all the way over to Farm Road 241, you know, we would have to, to look at that and consider what other, what other entrances that are on 60 highway there may need to have a change in access with that outer road being in place. But if, but if there's no outer road that's extended across there, then yeah, we're not. with that outer road being in place. But if, but if there's no outer road that's extended across there, then yeah, we're not, we would not be looking at, at any additional changes to any accesses beyond the three that we have at the intersection there. Next question I have, there was information posted on your web last year that clearly showed the results of the survey indicated option two was favored over option one, especially among the landowners in the affected area. The web also clearly stated that you had decided on option two. Can you please explain why that changed? Sure. Now, let me try to explain that one there. That's, that's, uh, actually, our, our public meeting that we had that was online last year, we actually had option two or concept two compared to concept three. And, and as I talked before, concept three, we were actually taking one twenty-five over the top of sixty highway at the actual intersection that, that's there today. And so at that last public meeting, concept two compared to concept three, we, we did see the, the feedback that we got from the public was that they did prefer concept two over concept three. However, in a, in an earlier, in an earlier, um, public meeting that we had, in fact, our second public meeting that we had, we actually had a concept one compared to concept two. And in that concept, we, we saw the public was preferring concept one over concept two. And so, basically, it sounded like people preferred concept one the most, concept two the second, and concept three was their least favorite one from all the public meetings that we had. If you had to put them in a ranking order, I guess that's kind of how they would kind of pan out there. But again, with, with concept one, you know, the city, the county had approached us to get after that last public meeting, and they, they were interested in partnering with us on the financial cost of concept, concept one. And so that was what happened to allow us to be able to, to change our direction and move from concept two back to concept one. And, and that's why we have been working on the design work since then. Beth, did you have anything you wanted to say? I saw you turn your camera on, so I just wasn't sure if there was something you needed, you were, you were gonna add to that.
Sorry, um, yeah, I didn't mean to turn my camera on, but I would comment that that's been a process where the, the city and the county stepped forward, um, as you said, to help with the funding, and that process took a little while to work out. So that's, that's maybe a little bit of the delay that you're seeing between the last public meeting and this public meeting.
All right. Thank you, Beth. Uh, next question I got, could there be a time that those going through Rogersville need to find an alternate route due to total closures of either sixty or one twenty-five? And so to answer that question, there, there will not be a total closure on sixty highway. We will always have sixty highway open. And there will always be two lanes going each direction for the busiest times of the day. As we've said before, that there'll be, might be times at night that we have to close a lane down to do some work next to the highway. But, uh, in general, we would see that sixty would always be open to two lanes of traffic throughout, throughout the days. On one twenty-five, that is the lo- location that we will have the closure. So Route one twenty-five will close at Highway sixty during that, that final stage, stage five. There will be limited restricted movements in earlier stages, but stage five, it will completely close and be cut off from Route sixty until we finish the work in that stage. So yes, during that timeframe of stage five, uh, one twenty-five traffic will have to find another way to get back to sixty highway or to get to the north or south side, the other side of the highway. Next question I got is, is there a pad of time built into this project that will opt, that with optimal weather, supplies, workforce, that this project could be finished earlier? And again, I will, I will say that at this point in time, again, we have not done all the, all the, the final design work and, and thus been able to come up with a, a good, a good, a good schedule of how much time it would take to do each stage and therefore to see if there's any potential for that, that, that end date to maybe be sooner than what we are predicting right now. So right now, I think we need to plan on and expect that it's gonna be the second half of two thousand twenty-four before we will completely wrap that, that project up. Uh, next question, is the final entrance on the south side of sixty going to be between Wildcat and the church? And I'm trying to think what they're, what they're, what they're asking there. Kevin or Scott, if you have a, if you know what they're referring to there, you might, you might chime in here, but is the final entrance on the south side of sixty going to be between Wildcat and the church?
There is, uh, the Wildcat's entrance, we're really not changing their entrances a whole lot. Um, it's pretty much at the same location as it was, uh, the one to Wildcat. Uh, we are having to shift the one to the property there in the corner. Um, we're having to move it, shift it due to the location, the close proximity to the roundabout. Um, but the ones to Wildcat were not changing a whole lot.
And, and the one, the driveway, I guess, beyond Wildcat Rental, I think, is the church, is it, is it not? Or is there one more between the Wildcat and the church?
There's actually two between the church and, yeah, there, there's two there.
Okay. But again, the only, the only entrance on, on a one twenty-five south of sixty highway there, that, that's gonna get changed, is that one closest to the intersection, and it will get moved a little bit further to the south, and it'll, it'll be right there to kind of share a driveway with the Wildcat Rental place, correct?
Yep. That's, that's the plan right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next question, it seems the tentative right-of-way proposal for the property between Apex Towing and Come and Go, uh, north of US sixty, has much wider borders. Are you anticipating expanding these outer roads in the future? Kevin, you wanna, you or Scott want to address that one for us?
Are they talking the right-of-way along sixty, I assume?
It says, yeah, the, the tentative right-of-way proposal for the property between Apex Towing and Come and Go, uh, on the north side of sixty has much wider borders. Uh, are you anticipating expanding these outer roads in the future? I'm suspecting that the borders are there rather because of, of what it takes us to do to get our, our new alignment of that ramp tied back in.
Right now, the existing, uh, between there at that point, right there, location, the existing road dips down quite a ways, uh, around six to eight feet. We're actually raising the road up when we come in and build that ramp. We're raising it up, uh, even, pretty much even with the existing eastbound lanes right now. That's, that's what's causing the right-of-way to show, uh, the slope line where the fill, we're putting quite a bit of fill in there, and that's, that's actually pushing the right-of-way line out to pretty close to where it's shown right there.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Yeah. So basically, we've got to build that new ramp in there, the westbound on-ramp. And there's a, it is a hole that we have to fill in, and so that hole requires us to go out further to, to build that fill and raise that grade of that road up to the elevation we need it to be at. Okay, next question, concept three with one twenty-five going over sixty highway. I'm not sure what this, this word is here. Concept three was, uh, was, was, I guess, was not picked, was not, uh, chosen because it would shut down one twenty-five over several weeks? How many weeks will one twenty-five be shut down for concept one? And, and again, I'll just have to say, I don't, I don't know at this point in time. I don't know how long one twenty-five will be down for. But it, it will be down for a period of time, definitely, because there is a, a lot of work that has to be done there to excavate out the existing grades. Again, we're taking six foot off of the westbound lanes and four foot off the eastbound lanes, so that's quite a bit of drop, and all that has to be feathered back in, tied back into the existing ground further away from there. So there's a, there's a lot of excavation work that has to be done in there. And then after we get that excavated down to the, to the grade we need it to be, we've got to, then we got to build all of our, all of our pavement and, and, um, the roundabouts and, and the islands inside the roundabouts and just get everything tied back in. So it, it will take, uh, take a chunk of time to get all that work done. Uh, next question is, uh, did land donations play a factor in the decision on which option to go with? Uh, the, the decision on which option to go with, basically, we are looking at again, what, what, uh, what we could afford with the money that we had set aside for this project. And then that, between that and the contributions that the, the city uh, of Rogersville and, and Green County Highway Department, uh, their, their financial contributions there, uh, has, has allowed us to, to be able to look at concept one and, and to be able to move forward with concept one. What, next question I have is what properties are involved in the northwest outer road construction? We have not been notified and are on Farm Road two forty-three. The northwest outer road construction. Um, I'm not sure if they're meaning the northeast or northwest, because the northeast outer road is the one that would tie into Farm Road two forty-three. So I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure what their question is asked, asking, but there are, there are a few property owners that are on the northeast outer road that would go from one twenty-five all the way over to Farm Road two forty-three. Three of those property owners are going to be, uh, uh, we're gonna be working with them to deliver the base project and to stub that northeast outer road out to, to that driveway that we have to, to, to get to. They're the third parcel to the east of one twenty-five. And then beyond that, I think there are another three different property owners that are beyond that point in time, that that northeast outer road would extend all the way over to Farm Road two forty-three. And so there would be a three additional property owners that are on that side. As far as on going on the northwest outer road, there is, uh, there is only one property owner, I believe, that, that goes from one twenty-five over to that, that farm road to the west. And I can't remember now which farm road is that one. Is that two twenty-nine, Kevin?
Yes, that's Farm Road two twenty-nine to the west.
Okay. And that one has one property owner that's, that's involved there.
Yeah, just one on that side.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next question I have is why do you want to make an outer road north of sixty when there's already a farm road between the middle school and the high school that links Farm Road two forty-three? Uh, we are, we are working to stub out that northeast outer road in order to be able to take the three properties that are, that are there between, uh, between sixty highway and the, the high school. There are, there are those parcels of those property owners and those parcels that, that exist between the high school and sixty highway. So we have to get their driveway to a new, a new road system so that we can remove their driveway from sixty highway. And so that's why we have to, uh, have to, uh, build that road, that northeast outer road in there. And that's at least how we have to stub that out that far. I know the city, uh, is, is interested and like to see that farm road, or that, excuse me, that northeast outer road extended all the way over to Farmer two forty-three as well as we would, because that helps us to, uh, to create a, you know, it does help create a, a, um, I forgot what the word is here. A freeway system, that's what I was trying to think of. That helps us to do, create a freeway system there between one twenty-five and that farmer two forty-three. Where, when I say by freeway there, I mean, we don't have any at-grade intersections there, at least on the north side. Next question that I have is there are seven businesses that will be incredibly affected if crossovers are closed during this time between Route NN and one twenty-five. First, why do you have to go that distance? And second, what solution do you have for those businesses when access to one twenty-five is closed, where they can't make a U-turn to go back the opposite direction? Maybe to start that question there, to answer that question, there are seven businesses that will be incredibly affected if crossovers are closed during this time between NN and one twenty-five. Why do you have to go that distance? Uh, Mike or Eric, would you guys, would you want to answer that question?
Okay, um, so for the, the reason we're closing kind of the middle portion of those crossovers um, is to not have people doing U-turns at those crossovers. Um, whenever we have limited the, the turning movements or the access at one twenty-five um, at various stages. So, um, basically, we're trying to prevent at these crossovers where we don't have left turn lanes, um, those people kind of stopping on the shoulder and, um, causing accidents on sixty. Um, so the, the reason we're, we're looking at those crossovers is because none of them are, are up to the standard that we would need to um, accommodate the U-turns that we would expect. Um, so instead, we want people to use the interchanges at either NN and J or, um, the next interchange to, um, the east there in Rogersville at Farm Road, uh, two forty-seven to um, kind of make their, their U-turns there and, and get back. So that's, that's the reason why that, that needs to happen, um, during those particular stages of construction. Um, and, you know, it's, it's all about the, the safety of the, the traveling public during those phases, so, for the US sixty traffic, so.
Right. So basically, there's, there's concern, you know, with, with that much traffic, if they would be trying to utilize those, those crossovers there, no, no place for them to get off the road uh, and, and maybe not be having a good, um, you know, enough gaps in traffic to be able to merge back out into, into traffic going the opposite direction after, after they've made it into the crossover. So the second question there, Eric, uh, what solution do you have for those businesses when access to one twenty-five is closed, where they can't make a U-turn to go back the opposite direction? You're probably gonna say, I'll, I'll, I'll let you go ahead and say, uh, answer that question if you would.
Yeah, um, my suggestion would be to make your U-turns at the interchanges on either end. They're both built out enough, um, to accommodate those turning maneuvers in the safest way possible. So, um, you know, I know it's a long way out of the way, um, but, um, you know, it's, none of the existing crossovers are built out to the point where we could use them to, um, accommodate U-turning traffic at this point. Um, and to build what it would take to do that would just add a bunch of cost to the project that would um, have a very limited lifespan, so.
Thanks, Eric. And, and again, I guess that'd also be, uh, be good to just make mention of the fact that, again, when, when one twenty-five is, is closed off from Route, uh, from Route sixty, cannot, no longer access Route sixty in that stage five. Uh, we realize that is gonna be a timeframe that's gonna be uh, difficult for traffic to get to some of those businesses that are on the, at the intersection there. And, and we, you know, we hate to see that, but unfortunately, that, that becomes, um, uh, necessary in order to build and construct this, this interchange, construct this, uh, this concept as we got it designed right now, trying to, trying to, um, get the, you know, get the best project that we can out there. So we just, we appreciate the business's patience, uh, as we go through this. I know it's gonna be painful, uh, for, for that timeframe. But, uh, but there will be great gains after that. I know the city has, has talked about that as well, that, that there'll be the great gains, that they'll get the, uh, the interchange and the concept that they want, and it'll be there for, for, you know, for a long time into the future, as opposed to another concept that, that, uh, that maybe is not so, uh, difficult, uh, for traffic to get to, but, but would also, uh, maybe move that interchange away But would also, uh, maybe move that interchange away from those businesses there and that would, that would be there for, again, permanent. So unfortunately, yeah, you know, some, some, uh, short-term pain for some long-term game, gain as, as, as a phrase I've heard, uh, somebody else say. Again, realize that it is, uh, it is somebody's business there and it does, does, uh, require some, um, it does, it does. Cause some restrictions to the, to the people getting to their business. Just a moment, let me see if I can get to my next question here. Uh, next question I have is, it says we, uh, we are opposed to the extension, um, and is it too late to oppose? And not sure, uh, what that person, uh, I think that might have been from, um, from a Zarina. And that, so not sure, maybe just as comment being made there, but. If that was, if that was your comment there that you opposed to the extension, I assume that would be the extension of the Northeast Outer Road. So if you are opposed to that, I guess you might, might, uh, might chime back into us and let us know, is that just a comment you wanted to make or was there a question that you wanted to get answered there? But, uh, but anyway, just not sure if you could clarify for us there. Uh, next question I have is have there been any land donations to this project to date? And, and the answer to that question is no, there have been not been any land donations to this project to date. Uh, Andy, as Andy talked about before, you know, we've got, we've got some things that we have to do before we can, uh, move into that right away acquisition phase at which time. Those property owners, I guess, could, could make donations to the project and to the concept. Uh, but, but as part of that right away process, Andy, you know, they have, you have to go through that appraisal process and, and. People have to be told and let know that they are entitled to fair compensation, correct?
Uh, that is correct.
Thanks, Andy. Uh, next question I have, concept one was to cost six million more dollars than concept two. How much money is Rogersville and Green County putting into the project? Well, it would not be, uh, that would not be a, an accurate statement there to say that concept one was six million dollars more than concept two. Uh, but the, but we do, we have looked at the, the cost difference in our, our current estimates between what concept one and concept two would cost and MoDOT is actually. Putting that same amount of money, uh, that they were going to spend on concept two, they are putting that same amount of money into concept one and Green County and, and Rogersville are. Putting in the difference between those two concepts. Next question, if concept two was used, would there be enough current funds to finish the north outer road, uh, to the east? Uh, and I don't, I don't know, I don't have an answer to that question, uh, at this point in time. Uh, there's been a lot of concepts that have been talked about in this, in this, in this project and there's been a lot of, uh, scenarios that have been looked at and priced out. The different, um, different cost estimates put for those different scenarios there, so I don't remember necessarily at this point in time what the different. Cost estimates would have been for concept two and or with the outer roads, uh, to extend something to the east there, but. You know, each, each concept, you know, has its, has a project cost, estimated project cost for the base project and then. There were additional, um, costs put together for, uh, for outer roads and stuff like that, so. But at this point in time, right now, in front of me, I do not, I do not have those, any numbers like that in front of me to, to talk about. Next question I have, business owners at this intersection have not been consulted in this reversed decision, concept two. Again, reversing from concept two to concept one, come and go is already closing. Uh, who is? Who is this a better option than cons, or how is this a better option than concept two for the affected businesses? And I guess I don't necessarily have a, uh, an answer to that question, I don't, not aware of, that, that come and go is closing there. Uh, but I, I can just say that the fact that, again, the, the city of Rogersville and Green County Highway Department both have. Have, have approached to MoDOT and stated that, uh, that concept one was a better concept for their community. And so that's why, and they, they're actually, you know, working with us on those project costs for the concept one, and so that's why we have, uh. We are, we are moving forward with concept one at this time. Next question that I have, customer, uh, who asked this question, there are seven businesses that will be incredibly affected if crossovers are closed during this, uh, time between NN and one twenty-five. First, why do you have to go this distance? I guess this is actually, this looks like a same question that we've already had. Uh, second, what solution do you have for those businesses when access to one twenty, when one twenty-five is closed? Uh, okay, then, then says to your response, there wouldn't be any U-turns, doesn't make sense. I'm not, not sure what they're. I, I guess, uh, again, Eric, you know, if you, if you want to go back and touch on that, that point again, but, uh, but. During those certain stages of the project there, when access is restricted on at route one twenty-five, we are also going to restrict the access at those crossovers. Uh, because of the safety concerns with having that additional traffic trying to utilize those, those crossovers as opposed to trying to utilize. One twenty-five that they can't use anymore or going. It would be much better for them, safer for them to go up to the interchanges to the east and west of this. Anything else you wanted to say on that, Eric?
Yeah, I think you covered it.
Okay, thank you. Eric, do you know offhand or could you, uh? Or Kevin, maybe one of you, do you know offhand how far the interchanges are to the east and west of route one twenty-five? How far is the NN and J interchange from one twenty-five and how far, how far is the farm road two twenty-seven interchange from one twenty-five?
Uh, the farm road, uh, two forty-seven is one point seven, one point eight miles. Um, east of one twenty-five and then second, oh. Measure the others here.
NN and J's like is, uh, three point eight. To the west.
Three point eight, okay, so basically, yeah, you're, you, you would be looking at a, you know, it would require or cause an eight-mile detour. Going to the west in order to get headed back to the east. And, and I forgot, Eric, what'd you say, one point three or something or?
One point nine.
One, one point eight?
Yes.
Okay, so approximately, uh, you know, a four-mile detour that would, uh, that would be required to go to the east to get to that other intersection or, excuse me, the interchange and make the U-turn there. So it, it does require, you know, a, a few miles, a handful of miles of detour out there. Uh, but I, I know there's, there's been many a projects that, that have had a bridge closure or something like that, that have required, uh, pretty lengthy detours because there just was no other, no other way around. But with that, that additional mileage, you know, we feel like that would still be acceptable to, to drive that mileage up. And then I realized, you know, that person has to drive that every day, may not feel that way, but it, it is definitely, uh. Feel like it's the safer option for us to do, it's, it's, it's safer for us to, to ask them to drive down to those other interchanges and be able to safely get on and off the road. As opposed to trying to let them utilize, uh, the crossover there. Next question I have, do you anticipate water and sewer to be extended across sixty, uh, from behind come and go? And I guess I don't have an answer to that question right now, I don't know if the city would have interest or desire to, to cut a. Uh, or to put, uh, water and sewer across sixty highway behind come and go, that would have to be a, a question that you could ask the city and then other city would have to, uh. To, to get with us with, with MoDOT to, to start to work on, on some kind of a plan like that to put some utilities across the highway. Next question I have is why did the city of Rogersville oppose option two? And I, I guess I, I can't answer that question, I think you would need to ask that question to, to Rogersville to see what their, uh. What their thoughts were on concept two, but we know that their preference was concept one over concept two and, and that's why they have approached us to, to make the. To make concept one, uh, the one to move forward with here, to financially partner with us on that project. Would the land donations for the right of way be considered charitable contributions, tax deductions? Andy, could you answer that question?
Uh, unfortunately I cannot, that would be a question that whoever, or if someone decided to donate the land, they would need to talk to their, uh, tax professional. And get that information from them, I'm not a, I'm not a CPA or tax person, so I can't answer that question, but. Uh, there, I would think there could potentially be some, but that would be up to a tax professional to answer.
Thanks, Andy. Okay, next question I have, our property will be adjacent to the Northeast Outer Road. Our concern is that it will create extra noise from the freeway and also increase traffic on Farm Road two forty-three. How do we appeal the construction of the Northeast Outer Road? Well, a, at, at this point in time, again, the Northeast Outer Road does not have, uh, funding for us to, to continue that all the way over to Farmer two forty-three, it will. At this point in time, it is, it is, uh, planned to end. Kind of that, that third parcel east of, uh, one twenty-five, but. But if there was, uh, funding found either, you know, through the city, if the city was, was to come up with some additional funding to be able to. Extend that outer road across there, you know, I, I guess that would be something that, you know, would be able to discuss with the city as far as them. You know, if they should provide that, that funding for that, uh, that outer road there. So how do we appeal the construction of the Northeast Outer Road, you know, there's, I guess there's not necessarily anything at this point in time to appeal. Although we are working through the design process and, and we are trying to make things possible for that to happen. But I, I think, yeah, I guess for now, my, my thought would be if you wanted to visit with the city of Rogersville about that. Um, as, as far as them putting funding towards that, that type of project. Or otherwise, uh, you know, I guess if there was other, the other way that projects, uh, get. Get a, get funded through, uh, you know, through the, through MoDOT and through our STIP goes, they go through a planning. Uh, commission, a regional planning commission that works with us to help us to identify projects there and, I don't know, Beth, you want to talk about that for a moment? Sorry to put you on the spot here, but.
Yeah, um, there is a prioritization process, um, where all of the counties within our twenty-one county districts. Um, bring forward about once a year, they bring forward their top priorities and then we meet as a group and, and rank those priorities. Um, I think the landowners question, um, pertain to just being able to oppose that actual project and so. Um, with the strong backing of the city, I would, I would recommend that maybe the landowner talk to the city about their concerns. And I think, um, with it being a specific landowner, we probably need to follow up with them just to see if they've got, um, specific, um, concerns. Um, probably not a format for the, for the public meeting, um, if they have specific concerns about their, their property.
Hey, John, this is Andy, and I think they could also, if they, you know, wanted to leave a comment that, you know, they oppose that and then we could put that in the meeting notes and also in the file. And so if it ends up coming up, that's something that can probably be addressed and passed on to the city.
Okay, all right, thanks. Thanks, Andy, thanks to Beth. Next question I have is will the crossover at Farm Road two forty-one be shut down during construction and after? Uh, Kevin, you want to answer that question for us?
Uh, during, uh, the first two stages of construction, uh, the, the, that crossover will be open, but. Uh, when, when we, uh, start to limit the, uh, movements there at the intersection of one twenty-five, we shut it, start shutting it down. We will have to, due to safety concerns with amount of traffic that's travels route sixty, we really need to shut, we will end up shutting, uh, that crossover and the other ones. Uh, back to the west, closing them temporarily until, uh, the interchange is completed.
Thanks, Kevin, and yes, and so talking to more about the, uh, you know, a, a long-range plan, a long-term. Uh, vision for the corridor, uh, MoDOT's vision for the corridor would be to convert this to a freeway. And, and as I was saying before, the freeway standards, you know, you wouldn't have any at-grade intersections there, so. Uh, if we, as we work to continue to create a freeway system out there, we would eliminate all those, uh, at-grade intersections, any driveways or crossovers like that one at two forty-one. Uh, but again, that, that would, it would be, uh, something that we do after we're, we have, we'd have to do other work before we would actually, uh, close that crossover down unless there was, uh, some other safety issues or safety concerns that may necessitate closing it down earlier than that. Next question I have, were all landowners in the immediate area given the same access to city, county, state discussions involving? The various options. Um, I guess I'm not sure what their, what their question is about. Except for, I'm assuming they're talking about, you know, just, uh, working through the, the process of the, of the city and the county approaching us, uh, MoDOT to, to talk about changing and talk about, uh, doing concept one. And I know that, yeah, when we were, when we were having those discussions, I know, I don't believe, you know, landowners were not, uh. Not necessarily in those discussions. Um, again, working with the city, working with the county, what we've been told from them is that this is, uh, concept one is the preferred concept, it is, is what is best for them and their community. And so we are. We are, we are working with them and they're partnering in with us financially to, to help deliver this concept one. I've got just a few minutes left here before six o'clock where we are scheduled to be closing this meeting out, so I'll probably give one more call here for any other. Any other comments or questions, again, remember you can send a, a chat into the chat box, you can call the, the, the number on the screen there, four one seven, seven six six four eight one four. Or send an email to SWCR at mo dot dot org and we will get that question over to me and, uh, see if we can get it answered for you. Think I saw another one just pop up here, um. Pop up here and so maybe, maybe I'll be getting one, a question here in just a, just a moment. Again, I'm, I'm seeing the question that's coming in here in just a moment, but while I'm waiting for that question to come, I'm going to go ahead and, uh. Move over to my last slide here and just wanted to say thank you again for attending this meeting. Uh, again, the, the meeting has been recorded and that recording should be available tomorrow on our website, you can go to our website again, mo dot, dot org, if you type in backslash SW. You can navigate to our webpage for this job on the major projects, uh, page. And you can, uh, you can watch that, watch this meeting that's been recorded. Also on our webpage there, you can give comments, uh, right there on, on the screen here, I kind of show you what you could fill out, just your name and your preferred contact information, you can enter your comment there and submit that comment. And it will. It will, um. Sorry, I, I got my, uh. My PowerPoint moved on me here, but it, it will come to us and we can, we can try to address your question there. Any, any questions that are submitted by November ninth will be included in the transcripts for this public hearing. Okay, the next question I got, what do people do if they have questions after this meeting? Okay, I guess, yeah, we just answered that question, if you have other questions that we hadn't had a time to address here or, or you think of afterwards, you're always welcome to call MoDOT. Uh, call us here at the number that's listed. Call, uh, um, come, come by the, the office here or, or again, call, call the one eight hundred. Ask MoDOT phone number and you can get put in touch with me or someone from our, our design team and we can try to answer your question there. Or as I was saying before, you can go ahead and submit your online question or comment. On our webpage and that will get directed to us as well and we can, uh, we can get back in touch with you to try to answer that question. Are there any county or city officials on the panel, since they are getting so involved, they should be, I'm not sure what they mean by on the panel. Uh, again, I'm not sure what, yeah, what they mean by on the panel, I mean, as far as the design team goes, again, we have, we have worked with the city and the county, they have. Come back to us with, uh, what they prefer as a concept one, they have even given out some ideas of some ways to, to try to reduce. They have even given out some ideas of some ways to, to try to reduce some of the cost of the concept one and we have implemented those ideas for them. To try to reduce the cost of that, of that project, but I'm not sure what else. Re, referred to when you say that. They should be a part of the panel there. Uh, next question I got, when sixty turns into a freeway? Will an outer road be built to accommodate businesses affected by closures of at-grade crossovers? And, and again, that would be the, the long-term goal or the vision for the corridor would be to create a freeway system there and that freeway system would. Would typically have the, the outer roads on both, you know, the north side of the highway and the south side of the highway to, to accommodate. Property owners and businesses that are on both sides of the highway there. So that's, that would be, that would generally be a part of converting it to the freeway would be to create an outer road system there. That uh, that people could access those properties still. Okay, any uh, any, any last, last moment questions here, I'm, I've got six o'clock and so I'm gonna go ahead and. Get ready to close this out unless uh, one more question or something pops up here in the next few seconds. Uh, I, I got another question here, I guess, uh, and says, uh, this panel, they'd be available for public questioning. Uh, again, yes, yeah, I mean, if you uh, if you have additional questions. You can, you can come, come to MODOT or give us a call, one eight eight eight, ask MODOT. And, and they can get you in touch with uh, with me and we can uh, we can try to address your question, if it's a question I can answer, I'll try, I'll answer it for you, if I need to go visit with somebody else from, on the panel with me today here, I can, I can do that, confirm with them and then get you back and answer as well, so. With that, I guess it is six o'clock. Six o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the, the meeting out here. Again, I want to say thanks for being a part of this meeting, thanks for uh, working with us on this virtual uh, platform. As well, and again, I just remind you that you can go to our website, MODOT. Dot org, backslash SW, you can get to the sixty-one twenty-five interchange. Project and on that page, you can go ahead and submit any other comments or questions you have to us and as long as those are submitted to us by November ninth. We will include those with the public hearing transcripts for this project. So again, thank you for your time, thanks for uh, joining us and I wish you a good evening.